Go ahead and call this meeting the order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
Present.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden. Councilmember Pesquale. Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you for that. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two items for closed session. One is Item A, confer with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The property is APN 51-095020 located at 1483 Gray Avenue, Yuba City, California. The negotiator is Diana Langley, the city manager slash executive director. The negotiating parties are to be determined under negotiations whether to sell properties and if so, the price and terms of the payment. Item B for closed sessions, conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation deciding whether to initiate litigation pursuant to paragraph four subdivision D of government code section 54956.91 case. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session. We'll go ahead and call this regular city council meeting. And how's your successor agency word this meeting is being held in council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council. Prior to the meeting. Thank you. Wow.
That would be an attractive thing to do.
Thank you. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
Present.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Apparently intruding tonight, but I'm here.
Thank you. This evening, the invocation will be given by Reverend Richard Lockman from St. James Episcopal Church in Yuba City and will remain standing for the pledge of allegiance given by the Vice Mayor Sean Harris.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to regather in person. You have provided us a vision of your kingdom to which we strive to achieve. Visit this meeting, we pray, guiding our discussions so that we open the ears of our hearts to listen to each other from each other's perspectives, allowing us to have a bit more humility around the decisiveness of where we can and cannot compromise, where we are alike and where we are dissimilar. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Enable us and especially our council members to work to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression so that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through your holy grace. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, thanks to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberatory, and just for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. City attorneys, report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, City Attorney. Agenda modifications, approval agenda. Item number 20. Item number 20 is being pulled from the agenda. Public communication.
Was that pulled or removed?
I'm sorry. It was removed.
Thank you.
It was removed from the agenda. Public communication, number one, disappearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on a consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any of their items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinion of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? You have three minutes to speak. Any public comments? Seeing none. Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on consent calendar items two through 14? Any public comment? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to council for action.
Did the mayor move to approve the consent?
I've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw and a second from Vice Mayor Harris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Business items, number 15. Certifying need for CalPERS 180-day wait period exception for Robert Condrey to be appointed as passenger bus driver. And this is presented by Ann Gillian, our community service director. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So I am here tonight to talk about waiving the 180-day wait period exception for Robert Condrey. Robert Condrey, after 30 years, 31 years, is going to be retiring on October 13th of this year. He is our parks and grounds superintendent, but over those years, his time with us, he has did a lot of things. But one of the things he does is he drives our passenger bus for the senior center trips. And we have a lot of trips coming up that we are going to need. There is a shortage of bus drivers, so it is hard to find bus drivers. We have a couple of others, but one of them right now is not able to drive at this time. So I'm just asking that we waive that 180-day thing for, or the exception for Rob so he can drive our, without him, we would maybe have to cancel some of our senior trips or at least reschedule them. So that's what I'm asking to do.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to council for comment or action. I've got a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is item number 16, heavy equipment lease financing. And this is presented by Spencer Morrison, our finance director. Sir, you have the floor.
Morning, Mayor, members of, or good afternoon, evening, mayors, members of the council. Tonight, I have joining me tonight Christian from NHA Advisors. He's on the big screen over there to provide any technical details should the conversation go that way. Also have representatives of the fire department to help with any technical questions on the fire vehicle in question. This item was introduced previously. All three were approved in the capital acquisition budget for fiscal year 2324. The dump trucks are important because they must be taken off the road due to old diesel technologies. So this is that same carb standard that is with the upcoming deadline that, for the last dump trucks that we purchased, so similar. And then we have replacing a 20-year-old fire grass, fire rig, wildland engine for the fire department as well. We did do an RFP. NHA Advisors conducted an RFP and put out, produced two reasonable responses. And JP Morgan Chase provided the best bid for a $1 million line of credit. The lease that we're talking about is a 10-year financing and we are utilizing source well pricing, which ends up being about a 10% discount over anything else we can get. The dump trucks we're talking about, 2023 Freightliner M2 106 with Cummins Power Plant, 52,000 GVWR chassis, 15-foot, 12- to 14-yard dump bed, and $198,549 cost each. And this is a similar vehicle shown. You might recall that this is $198,000 each is that's equipped and that is quite a bit higher than the last time I was before you. And that's where prices of steel and vehicles are going. The engine that the fire department wants would be a BME Targi Standard Model 34. It's a CAL FIRE spec. Because of labor shortages and other manufacturing issues, we are not able to get on to one of these orders at this time. We'll be holding the dollars in escrow for a period of time, just in case the model we want or another model that will be suitable will come, become available. Because it's a line of credit, if we don't end up making the purchase of this engine, then the money will either just go back to the bank or we might be able to utilize it to pay down the debt. The current price is for a tag-on order only. And if you want to know exactly what that means, we'll have to pull EC LeBlu up here. But I believe that means that we would be jumping onto a state contract. And then we're unsure when this will ever open back up again. There are all alternatives. Pierce makes an engine. I put Pierce in the photo because it was kind of a cool photo, but really what the department would prefer is another BME Targi Standard Model 34, but just not with the CAL FIRE spec to it. It'd be specked out a little bit differently, something more customized for Yuba City Fire Department. But the price tag for doing so is about $100,000 more, just, I think it's just under $100,000 more. And so obviously, we would prefer if the CAL FIRE spec engines became available. And really long lead time as well. So we're really hoping that something opens up on the CAL FIRE spec. So on the financing structure, we did have nine bids. JP Morgan Chase was chosen, as I was, as I said. We did, we locked in as soon as we got the bid, locked into 3.99%. I was having lunch with an investment banker today and she literally spit her ice water out when I said 3.99%. That is just really unheard of. The, I kept the copy of the paperwork that she spit on and gave the clean copy to my boss. But yeah, that's a really good, that's a really good rate right now. Everything's over four, over five. And so because we locked in, we were able to have that really nice rate over 10-year period. As you can see in the, in the graph here, it's level debt at $121,260. And Christian can correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, but I do believe that that's if we were to spend the full 100, our full $1 million. Looking for a nod. Yes, there we go. Yes. So if we spent the whole million dollars, which we aren't anticipating spending a whole million dollars, it'd be $121,000 each year for the debt service. We did choose that million dollar number because it gave us a better rate. So helped us, helped us with a lock in a lower rate, but we're not obligated to spend it all. This bid does have a make-whole clause. And I'm going to let Christian explain that real quick if you're unmuted there.
Thank you, Spencer. Can you all hear me?
Use a little more volume, Christian, but we're going to do that. Someone's running towards you right now. I can't even hit the plus.
All right. Can you hear me better now?
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Spencer, and good evening, city council members, members of the public. So the prepayment provision on this, on this 10-year term of equipment lease is what's known as a make-whole prepayment. And so essentially, if the city decides to prepay the lease and to pay it down early, there would be a, at the time at which the prepayment occurs, there would be a need to make the bank whole if the rates had moved against the city. Or if rates had moved to the point where the bank would be reinvesting the money at a loss, there would be the need to make the bank whole. However, a couple of things. One, normally these type of prepayments would only happen for interest rate savings. Given the size of this equipment lease, it's very unlikely that it would pencil for materially economic, there'd be an economic benefit to the city in a material way. Two, the city's traditional method has been to let these 10-year term leases run their full course to align the cost of the vehicle with the useful life of the vehicle. And so that's a summary of the make-whole call and the reasons why we're thinking it's not going to be an issue.
Thank you, Christian. Also, just a little further information about locking in to to Christian's horn. He did a really nice job for us in his recommendation. Since locking the rate in early September, the underlying index has gone up approximately 34 basis points, so 0.34%. So that would be, put us at about 4.33% if we had waited and let the rate float. The current floating rate for JP Morgan Chase is about 4.26%. And the higher interest rates would have resulted in $16,000 in additional costs. So it included a list of legal documents that are attached. I believe this was 150-some-odd-page agenda packet item. So there is an authorizing resolution, which is very similar to all the resolutions that we have. It sets the action and the limits. We have a lease schedule, which is, gives the details of the terms and outlines the payments. A master lease agreement defines the relationship with JP Morgan Chase and the nature of the lease. And then an escrow agreement that is between the city and the escrow agent and also outlines the escrow process. This is the anticipated timing. We're right where the yellow line is here. We're at October 3rd. And so by mid-October, with approval of council tonight, we should have this debt, this lease closed and ready to execute. And I think that takes us to the recommendation to adopt a resolution awarding a contract for lease purchase financing services to JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., to finance the purchase of two dump trucks and an all-terrain fire engine through a master lease agreement for $1 million line of credit. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for that presentation, Spencer. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any public comments? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Spencer, just a couple of questions concerning this whole lease and looking at the time value of money and looking at, we don't know about the fire apparatus that we're trying to. Financial sense says, don't pull that money down, leave it sitting in the line of credit so we're not paying interest on it. So is that, that would be your plan at this point?
Yes.
And my follow-up would be actually to our Chase representative. I want to make sure that with everything that's facing us in the future, that we're not looking at, this is an agreement that Chase can go, inflation is high, credit, things have changed, where suddenly our credit limit goes from a million to 750 before we have the opportunity to pull down the extra. Is it a firm million for the 10 years? That is it? There's no way that Chase can lower that limit as we saw banks during, you know, '08 and previous years when they were tightening things up with credit?
If that question is directed to me?
Yes.
Have I to answer it, Spencer?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and answer.
Yeah, it is. So at the close, they're going to put the million dollars into an escrow with the city's name on it and the money will be the city's money. There's no, the bank won't be clawing any of that back if there was, yeah, they won't be able to claw any of that back. That's the city's money at that point.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is different than what I heard Spencer say. So at the close of escrow, we're being given the million dollars. You're not going to hold it internally until we draw on it. You're giving it to us. So we're going to pay interest on it from day one, correct?
That's correct. Interest will begin to accrue on the money once the escrow funds. Once JP Morgan Chase sends the money to the escrow agent, interest will accrue on that.
Okay.
So Christian, what happens when we make the purchases and it ends up being $700,000?
Yeah. And any remainder in the escrow, there's a couple of options you have. One, the city can use it to pay subsequent payments on the lease. So you tell the escrow agent, hey, take the remaining monies in the escrow and pay the subsequent, the next payments on the lease that one's coming due. Or option B, you could say, hey, look, the city has paid over the last year X amount of interest. We would like to reimburse ourselves for some of that interest we've paid. So there's a couple of options with respect to what happens to the money in the escrow once the vehicles are purchased, any remaining access in the escrow.
Yeah, I just want to make crystal clear through the understanding of that. We are, it's not just a line of credit. We're pulling down a million dollars. We're paying interest on it from day one. And what you had said earlier that we weren't going to draw it down is not, it's not applicable here. We're taking a million dollars. So I'm fine with it. I just needed to know what the rules were. So, okay.
That's correct. The bank will be wiring a million dollars to an escrow agent who will hold it in trust for the city.
Mr. Mayor. Spencer, what, is the old equipment, is it leased right now, the old equipment?
It is, it is not. We own it.
We own it. What's going on with that?
It'll go to auction. So there are other states that are not under the same regulation. Yes.
Thank you.
Will entertain any action on this item?
Through the mayor. Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding a contract for lease purchase financing services to JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., to finance the purchases of two dump trucks and an all-terrain fire engine through a master lease agreement for $1 million line of credit.
Got a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden?
Through the, through the mayor. Did I miss this going out to public comment or?
You went to public comment.
We went to, okay, I'm glad I missed it. Okay, thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden. And a second from Councilmember Pesquale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Spencer. Number 17, boat, trailer, RV parking in front yard areas. This is presented by Doug Libby, our deputy director, development services. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So the purpose of this item is to consider initiating an amendment to the municipal code to revise the standards that pertain to the parking of boats, trailers, and RVs in residential front yard areas. Now, this is not a topic that is new to you. We've discussed this this year a couple times at city council workshops in January and most recently in September. The question of where to allow parking of these items can be controversial because there's people passionate on either side of the item. You have those who want the flexibility to be able to park a unit in their front yard to reduce storage costs, also to have ready access to it. You also have people equally passionate and believe that the parking of such units in a front yard creates clutter and a negative aesthetic look in the environment and could potentially reduce property values. It's not uncommon to see these items parked in neighborhoods in the city. Some neighborhoods will have more than others. City requirements, it's important to recognize, apply to private property. If you're on city streets, it's the streets and highway code that actually applies. So today, if you're going to comply with the ordinance, you would need to park behind the front wall of a residence facing a street and provide screening to a height of six feet. Now, here's some photos that code enforcement sees out in the community that are out of compliance. And then here's an image of items which are in compliance, back behind a front fence. So the revisions proposed, and the full list is included as an attachment to your staff report, generally would allow the parking of a single boat, trailer, or RV in a front yard area. It would establish new definitions for an RV and what utility trailers are. Parking areas would be developed similar to the standards of the existing driveway, meaning if you have a concrete driveway today, you would have to have a concrete parking area for your RV. Strip driveways utilizing concrete, asphalt, and pavers could be used under each wheel from the road to the parking area. Any new driveway connection with a city street would need to get approval, comply with city standards, and get an encroachment permit. You have to be a good neighbor. If you have a new parking area, you can't run your stormwater off on your neighbor's property. Parking areas must take place in front of an existing garage or front yard, front side yard area, not in front of a home's living area. If you're going to park one of these items, it shall be set back a minimum of 12 inches from the back of sidewalk or edge of public right-of-way in case there wasn't a sidewalk. Limited, these units limited to 12 feet in height. Utility connections would be temporary for servicing only up to seven days. Any covers would need to be fitted and in good order. And what we're really talking about here is no tarps. Parking areas would not, could not create a sight distance hazard. Now, on lots that are 0.3 of an acre at least, then alternative parking locations and surfacing could be considered by the director. And on lots greater than a half acre, and these would probably be a few and far between on larger lots in the city, a second recreational vehicle or utility trailer or boat could be stored within the front yard area. And alternative parking locations and surfacing could be considered by the director. And of course, any parking area would need to be maintained consistent with our nuisance code. So next steps. Should council initiate the amendment, staff would draft an ordinance, take it to the planning commission at a notice public hearing, and then would bring it back to council, where we'd have to come before you for two meetings, as you know. The first meeting, the ordinance would be introduced, and the second meeting, it would be adopted. For public outreach, staff would notify citizens who have filed code enforcement complaints as well as property owners who may be in violation of the current ordinance. So the recommended action, provide any additional feedbacks to staff you would like to make on this issue. And staff recommends initiating an amendment to our municipal code to revising the standards pertaining to boats, trailers, and RVs. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Libby. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any public comments online? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to council for discussion or action.
Through the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Libby, this is for, if there's already existing parking behind the six-foot walls or fences or whatever, this is an addition to, is the way I'm seeing it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? entertain some action here.
Move to accept item 17, boat, trailer, RV parking in front yard areas. A, provide an additional feedback to staff, and B, initiate a municipal law amendment to revise standards pertaining to parking boats, trailers, recreational vehicles within residential front yard areas.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Pesquale. And a second from the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council.
Business item number 18, consideration of 1111, Gray Avenue Public Convenience or Necessity Request. This is presented by Ben Moody Public Works and Development Service Director. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, council. So the item before you, it's real similar to last, last meeting in regards to this PCN. So it's a public convenience or necessity regarding an ABC license. Specific for this one, it's beer, wine, and spirits. And so the item before you is in regards to 11, 11 Gray Avenue. So the old Butler's Cleaner at the corner of Gray Avenue and Ainsley. The market is proposed to be called the Ainsley Avenue Market. And this has been in the works for about a year or so, maybe, maybe more, where they've, they've purchased, the owner has purchased the building. And then what they've done is coordinated with the Bint Prop. So the Bint Prop that used to be the old Starbucks, the new Starbucks location at Clark is at Clark is, the owners of that are transferring the license, proposing to transfer the license to the new owner. But with that, it really comes back to the city, even though it's, it's, it's allowed to transfer, it's not creating a new license technically in our area. What's happening is that it's in our commercial zone, it's within these certain census tracts or it's in, within a certain area that has a higher crime rate, and that's hap, and we're seeing a lot of these because, you know, just the location of our commercial zones and where that's, how that lines up with our census tract. And so, so what they're trying to do is purchase the, the transfer of the Bent Prop property, Bent Prop ABC license, and then locate it to 1111 Gray Avenue related to a proposed Ainsley Avenue Market. And so, to be blunt, there's some concerns when you look at that. And so staff's been working through that regarding, it was neighborhood commercial. It's, it's, it's an awkward layout as far as just the parking, how, how are you going to facilitate business in and out of there, and then do it so it doesn't turn into some sort of nuisance. And so, so over the year, we've been working with the property owner to, to provide some assurances with the redevelopment. So it's, because there's also blight associated with having a vacant building for staff. Is it, it's an existing building. It is awkward. It's hard to, how do you convert this to be some sort of a valid use, does it, so it doesn't sit there as vacant? And so we've worked with the property owner to establish some minimums with the, with the building, with the, with his business. And it's to improve the parking lot, designate, designate parking locations, improve the garbage, and so we have a clear idea where the garbage is going to be behind the building and screened, so it's not visible from the street. Let's get rid of the whole pole sign that's, that's rough, and then let's spruce up the front of the building a little bit as, as minimums that we want to see go into that building. And so with that, the, the owner, they're also here tonight, and they're happy to answer any detailed questions. They've talked about putting in place operational procedures, about limiting the, the store hours, and so they're not late, they're, I want to say they're 11, but I, or 12, but he provided a business plan based on those store hours, so they're not going too late in the day. And then with that, we've also communicated that he, we've put out a public notice out to the property owners within 300 feet, and then he's also coordinated with the neighbor just directly to the east regarding where he's received a statement that I believe has been provided to the city council from the neighbor to the east where there's some support from, let me find it here. So directly to the east, Mr. Pablo Oropeza lived next door, and he said he's fully in support of the market and hope the city council will approve. And so that was from 792 Ainsley Avenue was received. Besides that, it, it, that's really what it is, is, is they want to convert this to Ainsley Avenue Market and be able to sell beer, wine, and spirits there. And through that, and through the improvements, staff recommends that we see this as being a, a part of their business model and being a public convenience if it's done correctly. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the store owner and applicant is here tonight, too.
Thank you, Mr. Moody, for that presentation. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and the city council. My name is Kevinder Chetkara. I'm a local small businessman for the last 37 years in the area, and I'm a local property owner for the last 40 years. And I'm also a community leader for a local Shrinran Hindu temple, and they are our devotees at the temple. And I would like to recommend they approve this license, not only because I know them personally as from the temple and because of the community they've been serving with us, and also because I think they will enhance the neighborhood, and since I've been in the same business for 40 years without getting into any issues, I think they can do a good job also. Thank you.
Thank you. You wouldn't happen to have a brother named Kenny, would you?
I'm Kenny.
Oh, you are Kenny? Oh, I'm sorry, Kenny, that is you. I'm sorry, Ken.
Kevinder is my real name.
It's been a, it's been a while. It's good to see you, though.
It's been a while.
It's good to see you. Wow, wow. Do you, any further comments from the public? Okay, we're good. Okay, I'll bring it back to council for action or discussion.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Ben, could you, I'm trying to look at the layout of the parking lot there. Is there basically two parking lots?
So yes. So pretty much on Ainsley, you, you have this, so I guess this would be east, and so you could come in and out on Ainsley, and then you'd have the, the Gray Avenue right in, right out.
So Gray Avenue has four slots right in, right out, and the other one has four with one being handicapped?
Correct.
Okay. That's probably, I've been trying to figure that out, what the parking situation, it was rough even when it was cleaners. And I think that whoever came up with that idea, I think that works pretty well.
You know, I, well, to be determined. It's definitely a tight, and you know, as we try to work with redevelopment to try to fit it in there, to try to get ADA compliance, and then try not to cause a traffic issue on the corner.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, as long as people don't back out at the same time.
I'd also like to, I should add is that there is code enforcement options, and so if there is some sort of issue or nuisance comes through there with this, there is, there is always a nuisance and blight code enforcement action that the city can take, and also coordination with ABC that there's not a compliance or it's causing an issue if it does turn into something.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I gotta say, when we heard about this, I was kind of concerned for parking purposes. But what helps is you folks, your friends, your neighbors came and went to bat for you. And you know what, that, we, we listen to that, and it made a big difference for me in the way I look at this. So thank you for, thank you for that. Oh, got to stop.
Cut off. You're done.
All right.
Welcome to the podium.
Yeah. Well, thank you for, for taking the time and the effort to step up. Thank you for taking the time and the effort to put a business in our, in our city. And Ben, one more thing, do you have a brother named Ben?
Oh, Lord.
Through the mayor?
Yes. Yeah, I, I was, when I saw this, because my mother-in-law lives right around the corner. Am I within the 1,000 feet of this? Do I? No?
Unless your mother-in-law lives with you, you should be fine.
I have ownership in that property.
And how close is it?
It's over on Stafford, 1179.
Within a thousand feet? You know, council member, because we don't know the exact distance, my suggestion is out of an abundance of caution, you just recuse yourself for this item? Thank you.
He's going to go tape it off.
He's going Google map it while we're in here, so.
Any further discussion from council?
Yeah, through the mayor.
Yes.
Ben, just a couple of quick questions here, because, first of all, thank you for bringing something to this, because I drive past this almost on a daily basis, and it's, it's a blight, because the homeless are camping out, they've gotten into the trash on the backside, and I know that there's a lot going on. So the business is going to help clean it up. But to this parking lot, I was like Sean, really concerned about the parking. When I'm looking at those plans, is that curbs that is coming down to block people from coming in like they used to at the cleaner and driving through the handicap and out the other side? Or is that going to be open? Because we can see people do, I see people do it all day long. They cut through the Walgreens parking lot and dump out on Gray and, and they're off. So is that going to prevent them from cutting across there, or is that going to be a, a problem that we're going to continually have? I mean, at this level, right now, where there's the parking stalls proposed with the plant, I mean, the parking blocks, I, I don't know if that's a curb or not, maybe the, the owner could represent it, but my understanding is it's paint with parking blocks. And so it would keep your BMW from going over it, but it probably wouldn't keep your F-250 from going over it. Heck, the speed bumps keep my BMW from going over it. No, I mean, I, again, we, we've heard from your friends and your families, and it's going to be nice to see this going. That's my only concern, and if we can work with the business owners in the future, if it becomes a problem, I just want to make sure that dialogue is there, because I can see people causing that because of habit. It used to be a dry cleaner. You hook in, you run in, you hook out the other side, and you're gone. And people are going to be creatures of habit, and they're going to do the same thing, and I don't want an accident on Gray or somebody hitting someone that's handicapped or something going on on Ainsley. So that was, that was my concern, so. Point noted. We could definitely look at it through the building permit process, because the next step would be a building permit application, I believe is in, and then as we work to finalize occupancy, we'll look at it. And to that point, tonight's really about moving and transferring the license over and giving it our blessings to start moving forward, so. Do you have anything up there?
Through the mayor? Yep. First, thanks for taking care of a vacant building and putting something in there that's going to provide jobs, and, and that, that side of town certainly could use a, a convenience store. I know that when I get done with my Planet Fitness workout, I'll be able to get a candy bar now, so that'll be a good thing. But no, sincerely, I, I do, I do think it's great that your, the interest is there. Like everyone said, you know, the, the parking could be an issue, but, you know, it had parking issues there when it was a dry cleaner, so, or cleaners, and, and the neighbors are not objecting. So with that, unless the mayor has any comments, I'd like to go ahead and move that we adopt a resolution making a finding of public convenience or necessity for the premise-to-premise transfer of a type 21 off-sale general alcohol beverage control license at 1111 Gray Avenue.
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Boomgarden, a second by Councilmember Shaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. You've got four ayes and one abstention. Motion carries.
Recusal.
And one recusal.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Bye, St. George.
You take care. Okay.
Send back your brother.
He's going to rub that in all day, aren't you? Okay, moving right along. Number 19, emergency organization, organization structure, presented by our own Fire Chief, Jesse Alexander. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about a proposed ordinance in regards to amending Chapter Eight of our municipal code. So, and revolving specifically around emergency organization structure. So in 2017, the California State Emergency Operations Plan identified that certified disaster councils, which you are, are required to develop emergency operations plan. Last November, the council adopted a resolution approving the City of Yuba City's Emergency Operations Plan, also known as EOP. So tonight, we were talking about a situation that is providing some depth and some clarity to that emergency operations plan, and in a very extreme situation. So this is a worst, the worst-case scenario, so please keep that in mind, and I do not anticipate us getting to this point. In the event of an actual incident or a threat or a disaster or extreme peril, the city manager, also the director of emergency services, has the ability to do a local proclamation of emergency, as, which is outlined in our emergency operations plan. As part of that emergency proclamation, city council must ratify that proclamation within seven days. Based upon the extent, severity of the disaster, there may be some challenges associated with that. So that's why we're proposing amending Chapter Eight. The full changes are outlined in your exhibit of your staff report, but there's four main categories that I want to go over with you tonight. The first one is a disaster council. Currently, the, the mayor is the chairperson for the disaster council, and this proposed ordinance, it clarifies that if the mayor is unavailable, for whatever reason, the vice mayor serves as a chair. If unavailable is the vice mayor, the remaining elected council members will serve as the chair, starting from District 1s through 5 in that order. The second item is to talk about the director of emergency services. Currently, under the ordinance, the city manager serves as the director of emergency services. Under this proposed ordinance, it confirms that the city manager's authority to designate a replacement in the event that the city manager is unavailable and to designate an order of succession. So that ability is there. It also confirms city council's authority to appoint an acting city manager if the city manager cannot do so. So again, I reiterate, these are worst-case scenarios. The third item is to add additional flexibility. So going back to that portion where I said that we need to ratify the proclamation within seven days. This is to identify standby members. So each council member may be able to appoint up to three standby members. If a council member appoints more than one standby member, they shall be designated in order of succession, standby one, standby two, standby three, and so on. Standby members must live in the council district of the council member making the appointment. Standby members are, may become activated during a state of war emergency, a state of emergency, or a declared emergency. No standby member shall become a member of the city council unless there is a declared emergency. So again, worst-case scenario. The standby member shall serve during the emergency if his or her, and you're not going to like this next statement, his or her regular member is unavailable, meaning that you are killed, missing, or seriously injured. So it only occur in those, those situations. No standby member shall be a chairperson unless no other council members are available. This will provide a clear chain of succession in the event that we have an emergency, and it will allow us to ratify an emergency proclamation. Appointment and removal and replacement of those standby members may be made at any time and are subject to ratification of the council. For newly elected or appointed council members, the initial appointment of at least one standby member shall occur at the first meeting after you are sworn in. So after you are sworn in, the next council meeting, please bring your standby member so they can be sworn in. The fourth component is additional flexibility in regards to temporary city council members, which do not get those confused with standby. This in the event that all of city council is unavailable, including all standby members. If that occurs, temporary officers shall be appointed, and this is again, only if we have a complete situation where we have no government in place in regards to this. They'll be appointed by the chairman of the Center County Board of Supervisors. If they're unavailable, it falls to the chairman of the Board of Supervisors of any other county within 150 miles of the city, beginning with the nearest and most populated county. If they are under, under, unavailable, and you can see where I'm going with this, this is pretty deep into it, by the mayor of any city within 150 miles of the city, beginning with the nearest and most populated city. So again, I do not anticipate us ever getting to this point. So staff's recommendation is conduct a public hearing and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the City of Yuba City, amending Chapter Eight of the Yuba City Municipal Code regarding emergency organization, and waive the first reading. Are there any questions?
Thank you, chief. The public hearing for the emergency organization structure is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments on, from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, I'm assuming that those temporary folks are serving concurrently with, for the term of the council person?
Clarifications, standby members?
Yes.
Yes. And you can, you can remove them at any time that you would like, or replace them any time that you would like.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor? When does it, when does that take place? This all goes through at January 1, or?
If this proposed ordinance goes through, I'd bring this back to council, the next council meeting, and then 30 days for ratification, discussing with city council, proposing that somewhere around the first of the year, after, after the holiday.
somewhere around the first of the year, after, after the holidays, to select a standby member or members.
Chief, I appreciate you grabbing this and bringing this to our attention. Of course, we, we hope, hopefully it doesn't come to this, but at least you're thinking that direction. Having said that, I'll bring this matter back to council for action. Oh, yes, I did.
All right, through the mayor. I move that we introduce an ordinance to the city council of the City of Yuba City, California, amending Chapter Eight of the Yuba City Municipal Code Regarding Emergency Organization and waive the first reading.
I've got a motion from council member Shaw.
Second.
A second from council member Piscuali. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, chief. Okay, moving down to future agenda items. This is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in, in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at later date. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none. Reports and communications. The following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to it on a subsequent agenda. Number twenty-two, city manager's report.
Good evening. Just a couple of items. So, at the November seventh meeting, we have asked the new chamber of commerce president, Janelle Willis, to come to introduce her to council. And then, also, I just want to note that last Friday was the last working day for Claire Schauer, who was a project manager within Public Works. She'd been with the city for a number of years. She is going to be a big loss to the city. She touched every single department in her role as project manager. And then with the upcoming retirement of Robert Condry, we're, we're losing two really longtime, great employees, and it's great to see people to be able to move on into retirement into their next phase, but we will definitely miss the contributions that they made to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-three, city council reports. This evening, we'll begin with council member Boom Garden. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended a meeting, Sacramento Area Council of Governments as part of a funding group. This group is taking some recommendations from the California Transportation Committee about how funds, state funds, are distributed through Sacramento, Yolo, Eldorado, Placer, Yuba, and Sutter Counties. This is gonna take about another year to hash out, but it's important work, because there's quite a bit of funds that come through our areas. And so, I'll be reporting back periodically on that to you all about the status of that. Attended a ribbon-cutting with the Meals on Wheels in our own senior center, and obvious there was some, some of our senior commission members were there as well to welcome Meals on Wheels. They have their office inside, so they'll be appropriately situated for Waffle Wednesdays, too. Ad hoc committee work, I have a couple things to report out on that. First, on the city side, you know, the vice mayor and I have sat on the ad hoc committee for the city, a revenue ad hoc committee for the city now for, for quite some time. There's been an abundance of research completed by both the staff, ourselves, and our consultants. We've had meetings now with the citizens' ad hoc committee, and we've had a previous meeting with our counterparts at Sutter County, and have another one scheduled this week. At this point, I think it's time for, for the vice mayor and I to report out to the council informationally and, and start moving that process along. So, look forward to doing that at an upcoming council meeting. And as I just mentioned, we do have a meeting with our county counterparts this coming Thursday, Vice Mayor Harris and I, just to begin the discussion about revenue, revenue needs in both the county and the city, and seeing if there's some way that we can partner. And that is it. Thank you, council member Boom Garden. Vice Mayor Harris?
All right, I too am looking forward to the meeting with our county friends regarding the finances in the, in the area, for sure. Seco meeting, we, we had an update for the racial equity and action plan for the, the organization. Also, there is a call for applicants to the, what, I think it's maybe the fourth or fifth cohort for the youth leadership academy they have down there, where folks come in from high school ages, and they learn more about transportation, government, and just how things work in that realm. So, if anybody has any future leaders that they know that are in high school, I would love to have some representation of Yuba City at that, in that academy. We have had before, I believe, and we always get positive feedback. And we had a report of the Sacramento Regional Emergency Preparation Strategy, which is essentially how the agencies in those six counties down there in Seco could potentially, we're looking for ways for them to partner to kind of streamline processes in the event of emergency. It wasn't an action plan, per se. We ended up, we accidentally kind of got in the weeds and what-if-ing things to death, but we're quickly reminded, it's just a generalization of what can happen. It's not the bona fide, written-in-blood plan that we need to follow, just ways to identify that we can help one another in the event of something bad happens. So, so, along the same lines as what chief just did for us. Attended the Cal Cities Conference down in Sacramento, of course, the opening ceremonies, and also some breakout sessions regarding managing communication in the digital area. Specifically, this was for cities, but then also police departments and law enforcement agencies, when they have found that people, when they're sitting in the comfort of their own home, they get a lot more vocal and eat a lot more feedback, and they just had a good discussion about how to manage all that when that happens. And then, another one about the pros and cons of remote meetings. And Harvest Arts was the, one of the major fundraisers for Yuba City Arts and Culture that was held out at the Higher Rants, out at Ranch, out in the Butts. Very well attended, had several local artists and local restaurants there participating, and musicians, and it was just an overall good time. I think they're quite happy with the success of that. Also, would recommend, I think the postcards come out all the time, they're all over the place, of the events that they have organized and going on at that organization, both in Yuba City and in Marysville, and there's a lot of opportunities regardless of someone's interests, whether it's music, or acting, or sculpture, or painting, photography, you name it, they, they, they're doing a really good job. So, I would encourage y'all to take advantage of something that might have your interest. And that is it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council member Piscuali?
Thank you, mayor. I attended my assignment with the Feather River Air Quality Control Board yesterday. Couple of really interesting things that were discussed and brought forward was the fact that Calpine down here on Township Road is in the process of developing, or it's already developed, but implementing a technology to capture CO2, make it solids, and then transport it through a pipe system and into a storage, into permanent storage, into the rock and whatever. The one thing I took away from this is the, the manager, the gentleman that's running Calpine down there stated that this is a world-changing technology. It's gonna get us the cushion of about twenty-five years of developing, developing new technologies for clean energy. And this is, this is really a world-changing thing that's going on just in our little Sutter County. I had gone down to the Berry presentation with city manager Diana, and they've ramped it up. There's a facility down in Antioch that they're already have in, using in the process, and it's becoming very, very successful. So, in our little community, we're getting something that's gonna change the world, literally, for, at least to get us over the hump for new technologies. Another thing is that there's credits for Dirty in the Air, is what I call it, that we don't use, that people that own them can sell, and we transferred some of those credits to Sierra Pacific. And I point asked the Sierra Pacific gentleman, you're ramping up production evidently, and he said, yeah, two new kilns. So, there's a whole, but he said there was thirty-five new quality jobs, or go each, each one of those kilns. So, if you have somebody looking for work, it's out of our area, but it could be something for our community, for people here as well. On the other end of that, Waffle Wednesday went really well, again, as always. Always have a good time going Waffle Wednesday. I keep trying to get more and more of my friends to start going, but the commission does a great job with that, and it's always a really, really good time. Attended the Ninth Annual Pig Feed on Saturday night, was packed house. The officer with the little boy, I believe it's Clark, we raised a bunch of money for that little boy in that family, which was really, really, it serves well for our community that we can come together and do those types of things. And so, if you want, I'm sure there's a site for that little boy. He needs it, he's two, and he needs a heart transplant, and it's one of our officers, one of our own. So, I really recommend if you, if you want to help, go look, because it's sorely needed. And with that, I will close my comment.
Thank you, council member Piscuali. Council member Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I keep mine really short tonight, because I've really been dealing with mostly personal stuff over the past several months, and I was into the last council meeting. I believe, Mark, did you report off about Sabuca, about the levy that I reported back when I covered the one meeting, it was before the last meeting? The significant thing there is the Sabuca went out for a approval of the submission of the grant, and that's the next process that goes on, and they're looking to start on the east side of the Sutter Bypass Levy, as early as maybe twenty-twenty-five is what came out of that. I did get to attend the Air Force Ball, and we've got some great partners out at Beal Air Force Base, and when we look at our community, we have an awful lot of retirees here in our community, so I encourage everyone to continue supporting Beal, and, and that was a great event. Just want to say thank you to my colleagues. You guys have allowed me, over the last several months, to do what I need to do, which was care for my family, and we kept it pretty quiet, and I know that the public have seen that I haven't been at a lot of events. I've missed a few council meetings. We had a family member that lost battle with cancer just a week ago, and I just want to publicly say thank you, because these gentlemen, our city manager, our entire city team has been awesome in making sure everything has been covered, that no stone left unturned, and allowed me to do what was the most important. I can tell you now, in the next few weeks, we got a few more tough things. I'll be focusing on my family, but I'm looking forward to get re-engaged, and let's get on with the city business. But I just want to say thank you for allowing me the time that we've needed.
Thank you, council member Shaw. So, I'll keep it short as well. I attended the League of Cities down in Sacramento with the vice mayor. This is an annual event where it alternates between Northern California and Southern California, gets an opportunity to, for elected officials and other folks to essentially network and try to bring back tools that they can use in their community. I sat through a couple of programs, one on fentanyl and the epidemic, and also one on homelessness, and did have an opportunity to, to network with some folks down there, so it was a trip well-spent. I attended a emergency evening transit meeting where we adopted the final draft of the Sacramento Service Plan, had public hearings for that. We also did the annual recommendation where we authorized service for the Sikh Parade, which is on November fifth, and then we also went through the two thousand twenty-three annual performance report. So, not much other than that to report from transit. And I did attend my first Waffle Wednesday, and it, 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 it's everything, it's billed to be, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.